Looks like we have a quorum, so I am gonna call the meeting to order. I'm helping Roger out running the meeting.
Take your role.
Alright, we will go into executive session at the end of the open meeting to discuss purchase or lease of real estate. And we will not be reconvening after this. Does anybody want to be a time keeper? If you could see my eyes looking at you, you would know who I'm thinking about. Jess is on mute.
Somebody did a great job last time and we ended very, very promptly. I think that person should do it.
I don't know if I can do two things at the same time. Sure, I can be a time keeper and the acting chair, that's fine.
Are you looking at me, Raul? I will do it.
Yes, please, I'll be helpful, Jess.
Sure.
Alright, Liz, do we have anything from public comment?
Oh, sorry. No, there was nothing as of about 10 minutes ago, so I'm assuming unless someone is on the call and would like to make a public comment, please feel free to speak up.
Excuse me, Raul, I think you need to mention that it's being recorded, but it's not live streaming.
Correct, I think you just did, but if I need to be the one saying it, this meeting is being recorded, but it's not live streaming today, but anybody willing to join can do so over phone. I see a few numbers in there, I don't know if it's just board members. Is there anybody on the call that wants to get off mute and participate in public comment? Hearing none, we can move on. We do have an additional vote today, I don't know, Roger, did an email go out on what Ellen wanted to add for the...
No, there wasn't, there wasn't, it wasn't emailed out, so I can, after the minutes, I can take the floor and handle that vote.
Okay, so you can explain what that is.
Yes.
So if that's the case, we can move on to approval of the minutes. I don't know if anybody needs any time to review, but I will take a motion, if there is one to approve the minutes, from the last meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the last board meeting.
I second it.
Alright. Oh, roll call, I forgot about that part. So let me look, where do I, is there an easy way to look at everybody's names so I do this in the right order every time?
Do you want me to call them?
Sure, that would be helpful.
Okay, Raul?
Yes.
Benjamin? Ben?
Yes, I'm here.
Jess?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Salmimi?
Yes.
Kate?
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Sarah, for that, it was helpful.
Alright, would you like me to take the next vote then?
Yes, please.
Alright, so the vote, the purpose of the vote is to approve and, or re-approve a board member of the Stemsoaring Eagles Foundation. Part of the Stemsoaring Eagles Foundation requirements is that the AMSA Board of Trustees vote to approve anyone that's been, that's going to be a director of the Stemsoaring Eagles. And particular Lisa O'Connor is being renewed as a member of the Stemsoaring Eagles and therefore I'd like, may, we'll be requesting a vote to approve Lisa as a Stemsoaring Eagles board member. Questions?
I, sorry, I don't know what this is, so if you, someone could tell me what the, something in Eagles, but I'm not able to catch what the first term was.
Sorry, my voice is a bit rough. So the, so the question is, what is the Stemsoaring Eagles? So the Stemsoaring Eagles is our 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation that's tied to AMSA and they're raising money in support of AMSA.
Okay.
So that's, that's what Stem, the Stemsoaring Eagles Foundation is.
So do we need a motion to approve?
Yes, so it'd be asking for a motion to approve Lisa O'Connor as a director of the Stemsoaring Eagles Foundation.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve Lisa as a member of the Stemsoaring Eagles.
I'll second that, Raul.
Sarah, would you like to do the honors?
I will do that. Ben? Ben?
I see him moving his lips and he came up here. Raise your hand if you mean yeah.
Jess?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Raul?
You're on mute, Raul.
Yes, no, I wasn't even on mute, my microphone wasn't working, I had to switch microphone. Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Salmimi?
Yes.
That's everyone.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Back to you, Raul.
Alright, I think next is our executive director report, Ellen, our favorite part of the meeting.
Let's hope we can continue that. Alright. Shift this over here. Okay, well, it's nice to see you all this evening. And I feel that I might be a bit remiss if I didn't just mention the events of yesterday. And just my, my hope that, that our country is able to come together and to heal from the events of, of yesterday. It's a very heartbreaking thing to watch, what happened in our country. And, and just hope that we can have a peaceful transition and that we can all, as a country, move on from, from what took place yesterday. Now I will, I think I will, okay. Quick overview of, of my report today, I wanted to start just by mentioning that typically at this meeting, we look at the PSAT exams that are typically taken in mid-October, in the fall, and they would not, we did not administer the PSATs in October. We will try to administer those PSATs to our juniors on January 26th. And then we will have scores later on in the spring. There's additional dates in the, in the spring as well, but we are going to try to, to schedule this and to bring the kids in, in very small groups if we can, for those, those few hours there for the PSAT. So that they can...
Actually, Ellen, that was gonna be my question selfishly, they are gonna be done onsite at AMSA?
That's the plan, yes, Liz, we're, we're hoping that we can break the kids up into small little classes, we, you're, you're gonna get more information from, from Kate, but, but that's, that's the plan, there's a group of us that are gonna go in and, and proctor those.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Ellen, since you were interrupted, I was gonna save my question for later, but I'll ask it here. What does this do in terms of the impact on the national merit scholarship stuff that the juniors typically also compete for when they take this exam?
This would qualify them for that, this January test.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, sure, and then I have a couple slides on the HVAC system for an update there, and then we're going to talk about, we do have our decision coming up for February 1st, and so I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the process we're going through to make that decision and the timeline. And we also have some things that we've been working on, especially for this semester, for academic excellence and support planning. And that's, that planning is all in place, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what we're working on, a little bit of razzle-dazzle time, and then just any upcoming events that we, that we have coming up. Oh my, why isn't that there? Okay, well, I'm, I'm, now I'm not 100% sure what that was on, what was on that slide, I don't remember that being there before, but, okay, so here, here we go. Here's our HVAC report, so, as you, you may remember that Eric has been working with the HVAC company to check the airflow in all of the different classrooms, and so they did that, we got the report, you'll probably remember, and then there was three dates that were scheduled in December, to, that they were gonna go into each and every building and bring those, each one of the classrooms individually up to the, the six air exchanges per hour in the classrooms, 10 in the cafeterias, and then they would come back and certify the building once everything matched up with the initial report and recommendations to what was actually happening, and then we would get a certification in January. And what was discovered during the visit that they did in, in December, was that the control system, there's a separate control system in each one of the buildings, and that the control systems in each of the three buildings are no longer working, and they can't be adjusted because they, the age of the, of those systems, we, they don't, no longer make their parts to repair it. And I want to tell you a little bit about what these control systems do and how they actually work. And so I've, I've mentioned to you about that they're, they're on a damper system, and so there's a flap that allows the air to come in to heat or to cool, depending upon what the thermostat tells it to do. And so what, the current condition of the building is, is if you set the thermostat to 72 degrees, the warm air would flow into, to the room, you'd have the airflow and, and that, that you would need, but then as soon as the thermostat reaches the 72 degrees, the damper closes, and then the airflow stops. And the way that the system is supposed to work is that there's always supposed to be a constant flow of air coming in and out of the room, those six air exchanges per hour, and the damper is never supposed to close completely. And that's what keeps that, that air moving, and the air is supposed to change temperature to keep it constantly at, let's say, the 72. So as I, as I mentioned, what, the situation that we have right now is that as soon as it hits the 72, boop, it closes, and it doesn't open again, and the airflow stops. It never should have been that way, and, but we have found that that since the control system is broken, that there's no airflow there. So, so we're, we're going out to bid, obviously, to, we can get a three-building control system, so one control system that would control these dampers and control the flow and temperature in each of the three buildings, and we will, we obviously have already started the bidding process to find out how much that is gonna cost to do that. Now, in the meantime, we do have air purifiers that we purchased, and the air purifiers, we bought one, I believe we bought 65 of them, they will go into each one of the classrooms and they will purify the air and kill the virus in, in the air because they have UV lights on them that, that kills the virus, and so it would clean the air enough for students to be in the classrooms, but the air purifiers are not big enough or powerful enough to actually clean the air in, let's say, the cafeteria or large spaces like the upper school foyer. So Eric is currently working on calculations to figure out how he could even temporarily remediate the situation, the airflow in the cafeterias, until we're able to get the control system put in. He estimates putting the control system out to bid, as well as having it installed, a purchase and installed could be a two or a three-month process. Once again, running the purifiers in a classroom will take care of what we need, it will bring us up to code in an individual classroom where that is running, but it would not for the cafeterias currently. Eric, as I said, is, is working on that to try to, to fix that situation. And as it states down here, he is in the process of, of currently getting bids for, for the air control system. Alrighty, the next one we have here, this is a slide talking about term three and the decision that we need to make about returning to school and what kind of plan we would return to school. You may remember that on November 2nd, we sent home a letter to families to let them know that we would continue to be remote learning from, for the second term until mid-year, that date is February 1st, it's coming up. We have been talking, we had met with the teachers this week at an all-staff meeting, Mike and Brianna and I have a meeting, I've met with Anders on multiple occasions talking about this decision, what we need to do, the information we need to collect, what is best for the health and well-being of our staff, of our families, of our children, what is the way to educate our, our kids, what's the best system to educate them? Unfortunately, in this COVID system, we really had to kind of look at our purpose, our purpose in this very moment, and our purpose is to educate our children. We're a school, and although schools typically really address many, many of, of our, gee, our social well-being, our emotional well-being for, for all of us, our primary purpose is to educate the kids. We always want to be aware of their emotional and their social development, that's part of our job as well. I will, I will never say that it isn't, but in this moment, we need to make sure that we're educating our kids and, and we're a school. And so we will always be aware and make sure that they're receiving as much support as we can give them socially and emotionally, but we also need to make sure that we are educating them, and what is the best way to educate our students? So we've had quite a few conversations about that, we are putting out a staff survey on Monday, asking our staff what they feel is, is, is best, are their students making progress? And, and so we're very interested to get that, that data back from them. We would potentially look at some additional surveys also, and the plan is to have a letter out to families by Monday, the 25th of January with a, with a decision for third term, and that we would have a family forum to discuss that on Wednesday, January 27th at 5:00 PM. So that's the timeline, we are still in the process of making the decision, and we have not finalized anything as of, as of yet. We do want everyone to know though, that we are very, very aware of the toll that this remote learning has had on, on the kids. This is a different way to learn, it can be, it can be challenging for all of us to be on a computer all day. And we did analyze and, and looked at each individual student's grades, especially those kids who, who didn't pass all of their classes, or even one of their classes from first term, and we have put into place, Kate Driver received a grant to do some, to set up a peer academic coaching center, which we have Jess Losiavo and one of our new teachers, Jenny O'Larry, that have been working on that, and this is, this will hopefully start on February 1st. And our older students in grades nine through 12 will be offering academic coaching to our younger students and even to our older students as well, and they're, they're really doing a great job getting that together. And that's not just a one-year thing, that is something we're putting in place now because it's very, very necessary, but something we hope to carry on for, for years to come. We also have a lower school math intervention program, this is also being paid for by Kate Driver's grant. You may remember Mr. Dave Peters, he retired from AMSA this past June, Dave has taken this program on, and he's working with the math department and targeting students who have gaps in math, who are having difficult time keeping up. They can be referred by their math teacher, and Dave is also putting together a team of interventionalists, other math teachers who are gonna work with students in one-on-one and in small groups. So this is something else that, that Dave is, is getting off the ground right now. We are also talking about if we continue with remote learning, I've been working with Mike Noraki and Brianna Murphy this week to target students who are in need of extra support, and the plan is, is to create a plan to bring a small number of students in who need the most support, to hire some, some supervisors that would, that would help keep students on task, would keep them, you know, making sure they're moving forward and attending their classes during the spring. We'd like to start this also in February, if we find ourselves to, that we will still be doing remote learning, we would offer this as additional support for the students who need it the most. We're also in the process of planning an AMSA-specific summer school, this would be offered out to AMSA teachers who would like to work at the summer school this summer, this would be with our AMSA curriculum. In the past, we have sent our high school students to Asabet Summer School and the middle schoolers to summer school in Milford. We will have our own AMSA summer school this year with our curriculum, and as many of our teachers who want to participate. The plan is, is if you fail obviously a class, that we have requirements on summer school, but we would also look at students who might have really struggled, you know, the C-, D, if they, if they have some grades like that, to also offer enrichment to help support these students and have them ready for the fall. This would be, we would be hiring on a stipend also a summer school coordinator, who would coordinate, create this program over, through the spring, and then to manage and oversee it over the summer, and that is also in the planning stages. I do want you to keep in mind, this, excuse the flash there, I just took this photo prior to the meeting, this is the new and updated COVID map. I was notified by a parent this morning that Maynard was turning red, and I waited for the map to come out today, and that is true now, all of our, all of our core towns are now red. I also took a look at the positivity percentage, Marlborough, their test positivity rate is 9.7%. Hudson's is 9.72%, Maynard's is 7.81%, this is the first week that Maynard has been red with the new criteria that was put in, in the fall, and Clinton is 14.55% positivity rate, okay? Today alone, we had a record number of positive cases, reported by the news today, of 7,136 new confirmed positive cases today. And the rates in Marlborough, Hudson, and Clinton are well above the state average rate. So this is concerning, and I wanted us to keep this map in mind as we go forward and make this decision for third term.
I had a question.
Sure.
Ben? Have any of your discussions taken into effect now that the vaccine is starting put in place? Have they started to give any guidance about tracking that and measuring that in any way to help with, with our decision?
Not, yes and no, we had, we had a, I was on a call today actually with the Commissioner of Education and the other superintendents in state. You know, they were talking about the rollout, he's talking about the speed of the rollout, they just made a decision to, to vaccinate school nurses in phase one, it had been phase two, educators are supposed to be in phase two, and he said that we can be really looking at the end of February, as they're doing the emergency workers starting next week, I believe, and, but that it would probably take the, the range from the end of February through April to get all the educators vaccinated. They have not decided yet whether they're gonna do it on the school sites or whether the schools are gonna be going to, the educators are gonna be going to centers, whether it's a CVS or whether they're gonna set up centers to, to do all of us.
So I might just for a second, because we are on a vaccine schedule in law enforcement, and we're not gonna be getting our first shots until the end of January, and we're phase one, and the next shot is 28 days later. So it's just important to remember that it's not a one-and-done process, you also need 70 to 80% of your population that's working and existing together to accept the vaccine for it to include herd immunity. So it's not as simple as some people may think it is.
As we want it to be.
Yeah.
Right, I think as, as we want it to be. You know, so far, we have talked to the staff certainly about the vaccine and encouraged everyone to do their research and to please, to please get vaccinated, but we are, we're watching that closely, Ben. I, I would love, I would love to get, I want to get our kids in to the science labs. I've spent a lot of time talking to Scott about that, and the, you know, they're learning the content now. I would love to think that at some point we can get them into the labs. That's sitting in the back of my mind all the time. I also, you know, as we all are concerned about our students, right? And their, their social and emotional development, I mean, that's my background, that's, that's who I am, and I, and I think about those things all the time. And, and yet, I, I, my, my message to, to our parents, and they know this because they've been living this for the last almost year now, is that this, they have their eyes on their kids, they need to provide them and try to help them to have some kind of social interaction and to watch their, their emotional development, and if they have any concerns, to please reach out to our counselors, to their primary care physicians, and to those where they can get the emotional support for their kids as well. And we are doing the best we can in those areas and really feel a need to focus on academics. These kids are our future, they are our future generation, we need to educate them, and we need to partner with our families to make sure that they're still getting the social and emotional support that they need as well. And I, and I think that's, you know, that's our major focus at this point. Any other questions before we look at some fun photos?
Just a quick question, Ellen, just going back to what both Ben and Sheila were saying on the vaccination. Obviously, if we're looking at the teachers getting it, getting the vaccination, and obviously that's most critical at this point, if the kids were to come back into the classroom with the teachers, is there any concern there with the students, you know, it's more the student-teacher relationship, and would there be any concern with, because the students would not have been vaccinated yet?
Absolutely, and I don't think that, I mean, you know, when I talked to, the commissioner spoke today, he talked about, you know, masks aren't going away.
Yeah.
Masks may not go away next year, we don't know, and with new variant that's out as well and starting to spread through this country, we don't know what that's gonna do either. I'm very cognizant of the fact that 40% of our teachers are 50 and older.
Yeah.
And our staff, so when I say teachers, I, I mean all of us, when you look at 130 of us, 40% of us are over, are 50 or no. So I worry about, you know, this talk of that you may be vaccinated, you may not get sick, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you're not caring. And I don't know if we know enough yet. I don't know if we know enough, so we need to be careful and follow, follow all of that as, as we go. As, as always, we're gonna be very, very cautious. Cautious for our, our staff, they're very, very precious to all of us, and cautious to, for our, our kids. We know that we've have, have had, and currently have, many families who are suffering with COVID in their homes right now. And I've had a number of staff as well suffering with COVID, have been dealing with that in their homes for themselves or for their, their, their own families. And so it's there, it's there, and if we were all in the school together, all of these, all of these viruses, it would all be intermingling, and, you know, where our teachers have been able to teach, and, and I, and I really believe that our, our kids are getting educated as well in the system, as imperfect as it is, I do believe we have one of the strongest remote systems in the state, and would be willing to put it up against anyone's remote system. You may have heard in the news that the Department of Education did a, did a survey, and that there's a requirement... And that there's a requirement now on how many synchronous hours of learning that students need to do. And so what they did was they, they had us all fill out a, a tracking form to, to let them know exactly what our program was, how many hours our students were in front of teachers, how many hours were they actually connected to, to schools? And a lot of it was around the concerns around mental health. And, and so I, I did, I filled that out and then they took that to the, the State Education Board. And they determined a number of hours that were required now for students to have some type of interaction with the school. What they determined was for a remote system that you needed at least a forty hour minimum connection, and that the students had to be connected each and every day, even if it was for like a morning check in. And really what they were trying to prevent here was there were some systems out there, actually a third of them, who were spending much more asynchronous time doing packets and things without having FaceTime with the connection with the school. So the kids were much more isolated, and that's what they were trying to prevent. It did turn out that about a third of the school systems were told that they needed to improve their, their, their programs by the nineteenth of January. AMSA has been completely cleared, I have received a cleared letter from our initial plan. We have more than enough. Right now, we were at fifty four, which I'm going to need to change that to about fifty, because in the last minute, they decided they, they weren't counting the opportunities that kids had to check in with teachers on Mondays for office hours. So they're requiring forty hours, AMSA has fifty, and we have a five day a week check in. So we have, we've hit the requirements of the state and we're well over and above, and above that. So I feel very comfortable and secure with our academic program at the moment. I believe it is the best that we can, we can offer. We can always do better, we can always keep learning. But I believe we have a very, very strong system in place.
Thanks, Ellen.
Sure, any other questions from anyone?
Yep, I have one, Ellen. So I, I thought that we had heard that the air systems were in good shape for the school. So I don't know if maybe during this new set of testing that something else happened or occurred.
It, it, it did, Kristin. What, if you may remember that I mentioned during the initial work that some of the dampers were just, were closed and it had registered a zero, zero air exchanges. And we thought that that was just that some of the dampers were broken or stuck. And then later, when they came in to actually try to tweak and fix and say, oh, this damper is broken, that's why it's a zero, let's fix this damper. That's when they actually found out that the control system was gone.
Okay, that's, thanks.
It does.
Yeah, I, I also, you know, as that's a core operating system of the building, isn't that also the responsibility of our friendly landlord? I mean, didn't he do a lot of work on the air conditioners already in the windows? Wouldn't this fall under his purview?
I think that's, this is, that's probably a good conversation for us to have next week.
Okay, sounds good. That was obviously a key one. And then I, I love the idea of the summer school program. I just, that would be in next year's budget though, right? And I know you said you have a grant that you're looking at for.
Yeah, we, I, I got good news from the, from the commissioner today, that Mass, State of Massachusetts has, has received, found out last night that we were notified that, that the next stimulus package has come in and it is going to be bringing in eight hundred and fifteen million dollars to the state of Massachusetts. So we're expecting another, another sizable amount of money. We don't know exactly, it will be tied to the Title I formula, Kristin, but, but that was very good news. I, I, I got late this afternoon. So we, we're expecting that that should cover that. Also, summer school typically, now, we may not need to, but typically if summer school runs, there's a fee associated with that as well that would help offset some of that. But if we don't need to do that this year, depending upon how the grant works out, that would be, that would be optimum.
That's great, yeah. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we got a little razzle dazzle, just lots of pictures, but some really cute stuff I thought that you might enjoy seeing. Oopsie, oh gosh darn. Okay, there we go. So we had, General Society had their second annual colloquium night last night. It was, it was an awful lot of fun. My plan honestly was to take a photo of all the kids on, on the screen and some of the speakers. And honestly, I was, I was just so, I was so off my game yesterday after everything that happened that I completely forgot to do it. But this was just to kind of give you an idea of what the agenda was and the topic, what would, what should America look like in 2050? The kids were absolutely amazing. Boy, they were well researched, well spoken, well presented. And we also, one of our speakers was Steve Smith, talking about what he thought journalism might look like also in 2050. If you haven't had that conversation with Steve about journalism and the changes, because he was a journalist, you may, may be aware, in California a number of years ago. It's very interesting to have that conversation with him, the trends that he's seen since the nineteen eighties and where we are today. So that was, that was fantastic. And so we look forward to another one of those next year. And we had Spirit Week, the week right before the, the holidays, we had Spirit Week, we had Class Color Day, so we had Theme Days, Dynamic Duo Day. And, and so you can see that this is a, a class of sixth graders and it says, it says, some of it's backwards, but it says, we're in this together. This was their red day, the class, the sixth grade class is red, so each class has a different color. You can see this is one of our seniors here, they are green, and he really got, got into that. In fact, I was looking at the photos and every single day he was just decked out and just delightful to see. He has some siblings that doing some fencing and that was for Duo Day. Just, just fun stuff. This was all run by Brianna Murphy, our Vice Principal and our Student Government. And I just thought these were adorable. These were coupled as one of the biology classes for sixth grade and then one of the math classes for sixth grade. All decked out in their, in their red. So, you know, we're all doing the best that we can to engage the kids to try to make it as, as fun as we can. And then we had a Hawaiian Day and there was a sports day as well. This student on our left, he is one of our seniors obviously too. And, and Trey participated last night, did a fantastic job talking about the environment in two thousand and fifty at Detero last night. He's, he also serves on our Ed Committee.
I was, I, I actually just came off mute to say that Trey is an exceptional individual. And I was, actually, it made me very happy to see his engagement during Spirit Week. But yes, he is an exceptional young man and he's just done a fabulous job on the Ed Committee.
Yes, yeah, yeah, they, Trey is, Trey is a gem for sure. So, yeah, so that, that was, aren't they adorable, my gosh. All right, and then something new, we have a new sixth grade hiking club. And this was initiated for all the parents who might be listening, but this was, a dad had contacted me. He's very familiar with the trails and things in, in Marlborough and the area. And he said, I'd really like to do this, I have a new sixth grader. So I connected him with Mark Vidal. Mark is a great hiker, you know, the track coach, and they put together this, this nice group of, of kids and they're, they're making sure they, you know, they're, they're, you can see them kind of walking and filed there. But for the sixth graders, it's been nice to give them a chance to kind of get to know each other a little bit. These pictures went up on to our Facebook web, Facebook page. And I saw parents saying, oh, I'd like to see this for other grades and I'd like to, you know, this is fantastic. We also got our ski club is starting tomorrow night. And we have, gosh, there must be a hundred kids that are involved in that, as seventy five kids. Not as many as usual because we had to limit it, but we are trying to get the kids outside, right, in a safe way, if we can, as we can. So some upcoming events, we are doing a couple of family forums next week. We had a request from ninth grade, of ninth grade parents and twelfth grade parents to do a family forum just for them. And we're going to do that, I think the ninth grade one will be more or less like an orientation into high school. What's it like to be, you know, in high school at AMSA? What can the kids expect, what kind of support? And as we're looking at college and career and, and things like that going through, so a lot of questions and answers for that. And then right after that, we'll be doing one for the twelfth grade. I think the primary goal of this one would be to talk to the parents about how can we make this year a special year? So that our, our seniors don't walk away feeling like they've, they've lost everything. And so starting to engage them in that conversation. We've already started talking about graduation, you know, how we can make that special again this year. But want to make sure that our seniors know that they're, they're well loved and, and supported over these next several months. Then we have board training coming up on Saturday, just a quick reminder for you at ten AM on the twenty third. We will be having another family forum to make the, to answer questions and talk to the parents on the twenty seventh. By then we will have made the decision on term three. We have an eighth grade step up night at six o'clock on February third. And that is to engage with our eighth grade families and students and talk to them once again about programming in ninth grade to encourage them to stay at AMSA. And then we have also planned February twenty seventh, another strategic planning meeting for the board from nine to noon on February twenty seventh.
Ellen, just one quick comment since that date up there for the family forum. First of all, my, my personal comment on the, what you just walked through for the summer program and, and the, what's going to happen with the next period? Is that I, I think, you know, things are not getting better as far as the, you showed the map, everything being red and whatnot. And I think we need to continue to be cautious as we've been, but I also think that you and the, and the school has taken a lot of steps to make sure we, we make this the best experience possible. Even mixing in, you know, some in person as much as we can. So acknowledging that and supporting whatever the decision ends up being, I think would be helpful, and I'm putting this out there for the rest of the board, if anybody wants to attend that family forum, that to have the board be present there to make sure we also understand what, you know, everything that was announced two days before and that we support the administration on this. Of course, we need to be careful with the forum and whatnot, but we're just putting it out there for anybody that, that plans to be there. That might be a good idea for us on the board to, to be in that meeting.
Thank you, thank you, Raul, I, I appreciate that. You know, this is, this is difficult for, for everyone. And certainly for, for our families, they have been so patient. And, you know, we're, we're working through what we, what we have and trying to create the best program we can for, for all of our students, they are our priority. Anyone else have any other thoughts or questions? Other than that, I'm really hoping for twenty twenty one here, and I know you are too. We've, it's going to be, it's going to be a better year because it has to be. So we'll keep our community, yeah, we'll keep our community together and and try to keep everybody safe and, and knowing that, that we support them and whatever it is that they're going that's happening in their homes and with their own families as well.
Absolutely. So Jess can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're right on time. Does anybody?
I was just looking at the clock saying, this is the, I have six forty five as the end time and you could tell it was wrapping up. So it was perfect, I didn't even have to do my little jerk thing.
Well, we have ten minutes for Q and A, so if anybody wants to.
That included the ten minutes, Raul, don't worry, I'm on top of it.
Yes, does anybody have any questions for Ellen, any other topics to bring up for her?
Thanks, Ellen, this was great to hear overall. I really appreciated getting the invitation to the dinner, the yesterday's symposium that you had. And then the events of the day took over and somehow I, I apologize for that. I really actually wanted to be there to listen to them. I think that would have been really interesting, I was wondering if there was a recording by any chance?
Did they record it? Hmm, I'll have to check in on that.
They did last year, so I'm going to guess they probably did, but I don't know that.
If, if they did, I will, I'll have Mike Finkel send, send the link out.
That was awesome, I think the topics were really neat, it would be nice to listen to if, if you can manage that, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that was my question too, so definitely if it's recorded, please send it, thank you.
I sure will.
Excellent, well, unless there's anything else, I guess we can turn it over tomorrow for the parent rep report.
Awesome, well, this is actually going to be quite brief because Ellen covered everything that any parent has asked me in the past month. Basically, it's all been about age back, when are we going to know about term three? You know, kind of what is being taken into the decision, what factors is the administration looking at? And so you've really laid it out for us. And we've got the next set of family forum dates now in front of us. And so that, that kind of answers the majority of the questions, that's literally all it's been. And so if there are any other questions, I would definitely welcome people to go ahead and shoot me an email. The only other thing is for Ellen's slide presentation, I mean, I know it's over now. I got an email in the middle of it, if there's any way for the listening folks to be able to see it, I mean, it goes out, does Mr. Finkel send it an email afterward or does it get posted anywhere after?
The video does. The video which would show, which would show the slides, I send out typically.
It's in the minutes, Ellen, I always include your slides.
All the slides are in the minutes.
You can get it on, online, it will be available probably tomorrow.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. That was it.
Thanks, Maura.
Thank you, Maura. It was definitely brief. Jess, faculty rep.
Hi, I also don't really have a lot that teachers have come to me with. I think being on vacation for two weeks is, since our last board meeting helps that because there's just not as much sort of happening. I would say that from faculty that I have been chatting with, I think the topic that, like all of you, I'm sure, that is really occupying most of our, you know, mental space is, is, is any kind of movement where we would be back to in-person learning? When that could happen, when we would know, how long it would take to, between when we make that decision and when it could actually happen? There's a lot of teachers who are fearful of that happening because of their own health or their family's health or their, their family's working situations, if you have young kids at home. So, and then of course, some, there are some teachers who are, and all of this being balanced with teachers who would like to be, have some in-person learning, to be able to do things like science labs and really kind of build on that student teacher relationship, which all of us really miss tremendously. I mean, it's one of the most rewarding parts of being a teacher. So I think sort of all of that churn about, about back to school and when and how and why is, is occupying a lot of teachers' thoughts. But I, I don't, we had an all staff meeting and Ellen and Mike and Brianna went over a lot of that with us. They assured us that a survey is going out about that. So I feel like communication about those things is happening in an appropriate way. And that most teachers that I've talked to feel uneasy, yes, but mostly comfortable with the process and the decisions and the communication that is happening. It's just, there's so much unknown that there's an element of unease there, I think, among, among teachers. And of course, the vaccinations as well, when will we get them, how will we get them, how will we know? I think there's a lot of questions about that too. And just sometimes there's just not answers yet, so that, that uneasiness can just be a little bit unsettling. I, I think that that's probably where, where most teachers are right, right now. In terms of the school calendar, we are, by the end of the month, well, it'll be at the end of the term. So, you know, we have that sort of, you know, looming up on us and what, what all of that entails. But, yeah, I, I don't really have a lot of, a lot of issues that, that were brought to us. I think it is worth mentioning that the racial diversity and equity and inclusion training that we were scheduled to have right before break ended up being postponed. So in case anybody was wondering how that went or if, if there were any questions or feedback from that, that has been postponed for us. So I don't have any feedback on that either. That's all I really have. I don't know if anyone has questions.
Any questions either for Jess or Maura or Ellen's, any topics that you think we should discuss further? I'll just make a comment, we didn't have any agenda item for the survey review, the fall survey review, because we knew we started it later than usual and we were just going to get the results, you know, recently, which is. uh we started it later than usual and we knew we're just gonna get the results, you know, recently, which is exactly what happened. So we got the results now and the task force is is reviewing the comments and and the and you know, the the quantitative results. So it is on the agenda for the February meeting for us to go over the results. But for those of you in the task force, um just get ready. Well, you know, just go through. You guys have received already some of the, I mean, you have received the the results and we'll be getting together to um put together how we're gonna report them in the next board meeting. So stay tuned for the February board meeting for that. Roger, I don't know if this counts as uh chair business, but we did talk about in the offsite that we're gonna be doing on the 23rd. We might have to add a vote there and maybe we can have Ellen explain that. I don't know if this is the right time in the agenda to bring that up.
That was good.
So maybe you'll do a better job of explaining what that vote is about than than I would.
The SOA, the Student Opportunity Act that we talked about earlier. Okay. Um, so Liz, this probably is is of particular interest to to the ed committee. Um, so a year ago, um, the governor, uh, they passed a bill called the Student Opportunity Act. And the promise was that it was gonna just kind of rain down money for about seven years into education. Um, you may remember that um that it was it was shut down and and put on hold uh with the uncertainty in the state budget this at the end of the spring. Um, and one of the requirements of that was that the school needed to look at the money, the pot of money they were gonna get, and then create a plan on what the way that you were gonna use that to close the achievement gap. Um, but because they were never able to tell us how much money we were gonna get and they didn't know where it was all gonna stand, they kept postponing when this plan was was due. Um, they just came out before the holidays and said that the plan is going to be due on January 15th, but there's no money attached to it. Now, we're legally obligated to create a plan as part of the bill. So we have to create a a plan. It has to be posted on the website. And basically, they said document what you're doing now to help support kids during, you know, your the 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 learning for the rest of the year. Now, from now on, each year, this up you'll keep continue to update this plan every year and it's gonna become part of the annual report. So you'll see it every August 1st in the annual report. But for this year, I need to have something submitted by next Friday. Mike and Brianna and I have been have been working on it. We have all of those things that I listed in the report will all be in there. Um, and then it needs a it needs a board vote. Okay, so ed committee, um and and they do know that because this was all such short notice that we may not be able to get a board vote prior to the plan being due. So what we would what we talked about, Roger, Raul and myself talked about prior to this meeting was that I I will obviously the plan is is done. It just needs to be put into the the document. That I will do that this week. I will give it to ed committee. Ed committee can review it. Um, ask any questions you may have next week. Um, and then we would do a vote on the 23rd of um of January, just prior to our equity uh and diversity training on the 23rd. Sound okay to you?
That that's great, Ellen. Thank you, um, because I was actually sending over the agenda to um to Sarah tomorrow, so I will make sure that we get that on the agenda and that we do a a deep dive and review on that.
Okay.
Mike and Brianna, FYI, it's gonna be the Mike and Brianna show for next Thursday.
Yes, yes, it definitely it definitely will be and they they're not aware of that yet because
Yes, I know.
I just uh
Surprise!
Oh, I hear you. I hear you.
Okay.
Okay. By the way, I I don't recall if you said this, but part of this admission is to say that the board will be voting on. So when you submit on the 15th, we'll we'll say that we will be confirmed.
Vote to follow on the 23rd.
Yeah, there's a a little checkbox just because they know they've kind of put schools into into a little bit of crunch. And it's not just charter schools, so it's um school committees as well across the state. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you for for that detail. Roger, was there anything else in chair business?
No, I think we covered it all.
All right, it's like I think we're ahead of time to hear from our committees. So Sheila, do you wanna talk about governance?
Hello. Um, so for governance, we we met this month, um, working on a couple of things. So many I know is working with our um different committee chairs, working on how we are going to capture and track our progress on um committee goals and then feeding into our board goals. Um, and we're also working on the second piece of our offsite. Um, so obviously, January is gonna be our diversity and inclusion. But um, you know, working on some of the goal development and also looking at some um ideas for meeting efficiency. Um, you know, looking at some other sources and other boards and what we might be able to fold in um to our practice to help move our meetings along. Um, so that's kind of where we're at. I don't know if any of our governance committee members have anything to add, but that's kind of where we've been at with governance committee right now. That's it.
Yeah, I think that captures uh from the discussion. I don't remember anything else I didn't just mention. Any questions for Sheila? We're flying through this. I need to make sure you guys are not too excited about the how quickly the meetings going, but I wanna give this role back to Roger next time. But I know.
Stop jinxing us, please. You're gonna jinx us if you keep saying it, so please stop.
So Kristen, uh, I know from the agenda, it looks like we have a lot to talk about, so.
Me? Did we skip someone? How did I get here already?
I don't know. I'm following the order. If you want development to come first, we can do that, but.
Okay, no, that's fine. Um, I do have a document to share to mix it up here a little bit for everyone. I'll go real slow for everybody since everyone's really upset that we're speeding through here. So bear with me. Uh, I need someone to let me share post.
Can you share because I allowed everybody to?
Um, it says host participant screen.
Okay, I don't know why it went off. There you go.
Yeah, there you go. All right, let me know. Can you see the spreadsheet? I can see it. Spreadsheet? Yep. Okay, great, thanks, because it kind of looks like it's sharing another screen. Uh, okay, so for the month of November, that's the month that we're reviewing. We had income of 1.45 million dollars versus the plan of 1.4, so 50,000 higher. Um, the uh, slow it down here. Hold on, hold on. My screen is frozen here. Okay. Uh, tuition was higher than the budget. We had, if you recall, um in in the previous report that we did, we had received an update from the state that had increased the revenue that we were going to receive over the budget. Um, we actually received a change to that as well. And so starting in December, we'll actually see this go back down slightly lower versus what we had there. Uh, so this overage will drop a little bit going forward when we get into the December report. Uh, for the other items, pretty close to budget with the exception of student programs and the athletic programs, which were down. And that is directly related to the uh remote learning and not having as many programs. Um, so that's the income. Expenses stacking up to be consistent with the last month in terms of uh salaries and taxes are obviously pretty close to actual. And the other spending is not uh is not up to plan right now. Again, a lot of that is due to being remote learning, facilities, for example, a $53,000 lower than planned spend in the month. And some of these are timing, but a lot of this is related to the remote learning. Uh, and so for total expenses, they were lower than planned by $97,000. And so therefore, the surplus uh came in at $242,000 versus a budget of 96. Uh, so $146,000 favorable. On a year-to-date basis, income for the school totaled 6.7 million versus a 6.6 budget. So in total, we're 71,000 better. And again, that's the netting of the tuition increase that we had received, uh, less the reductions in the student uh programs, athletics, and of course, the transportation, because we haven't started billing the busing. For expenses, uh, in total, year-to-date through November, we are $437,000 lower than plan. Uh, the majority of that coming in on facilities costs, again, because of remote learning. Uh, like I said, uh, we did receive in December a notification from the state that we will have less revenue. Um, and we will run that through the numbers as soon as we lock that in. And then in March, uh, we should receive another update that will give us a clearer picture as to what is going on with the school budget, the state budget for the schools. Um, no other issues on the balance sheet. Cash is consistent uh and positive and growing in line with this surplus. Um, capital assets for the year are moving along. A lot of the money that we had planned on has been covered by grants. And we we uh we did go over the whole grant program. I don't have it in front of me, but maybe we can talk about that next month when we review the finances. And Nana and Ellen and her teams have um really put a lot of work into uh going out after grants. There's a bunch that they get every year. And then there's a number that are uh in place specifically for COVID and they've done an excellent job uh investing that money in the school uh so that we are will be prepared when when the school belt goes back in, but also a lot of programs to help the students with their learning. So it was a good good month for the finances. Any questions? No? Good. Um, and actually, Leanna did chat, if you didn't see that, that the grant spreadsheet is available on Board on Track. So if anybody wants to take a look at that, that is out there.
It's actually waiting for you to bring it up. I guess we don't have to go over it.
I didn't see it, but I didn't uh.
Yeah, it's on the agenda there, I think.
Oh, it is on the agenda?
Yeah. But I think we're good unless anybody wants to.
Does anybody wanna look at that now? Any any ideas, thoughts? We have time? All right, maybe we'll we'll I'll plan to do a summary next time. I didn't realize it was in the agenda. I was looking all around for some of the others and I still didn't see it.
I was, since it was on the agenda, it would have normally gone with the um the minutes tomorrow, the documents tomorrow would be posted on the website. Would you like me not to post that since no one has? Well, it's been shared, so I have to. Okay, never mind.
It's fine. It's good information if anybody's. It's pretty self-explanatory.
Any questions or comments for Kristen? All right, then Ben, that's a good segue talking about grants and money.
All right, great. So uh, we didn't, uh, the development committee did meet um in December. Uh, we spent some time, actually a good majority of the time, talking about some of the tools that we have and and how better to use them. Uh, we spent uh or we started talking about uh the donor perfect product that we had, which traditionally Mark was using for um keeping track of the the donations he was receiving through the website. However, um, I did get hooked up with uh with Mark after and he got me a login. So we're gonna start to expand the use of our investment in donor perfect across uh the whole development committee and to start keeping track of um a couple of different initiatives that we have going on. Uh, we also talked about um with uh Mike, uh, I think he joined the uh the meeting as well. And uh, he informed us that there's a um opportunity to enhance the donation page on the AMSA website. So he's gonna join us at the next meeting as well to walk us through what he has as a skeleton for that. So we can start to um uh get creative and and drive more people to that page as well as provide uh reasons to go to that page for updates and and some information you may wanna do. Um, we discussed, um, you know, Ellen will be uh coordinating some of the efforts between what we're doing and some of the other committees that the school gets involved with so that we have uh um alignment and and uh and collaboration. And then we did uh also discuss the opportunity to create uh fireside chats. So we talked about creating small little um kind of, I wanna say movies, but you know, just inter interviews from representatives from all the different uh um committees that are going on from a development point of view, just to kind of explain what their primary fundraising goals are and to educate some of our um families and our uh corporations as well as the community that we we serve. And the last thing was uh about a couple of months ago, um, one of our um parents from the from the um from our families uh came and and offered to help out with some of the alumni communication and some of the structure around that. I subsequently met with uh with this person Olivier and we talked through a bunch of the things he learned and has experienced with from uh both his uh private school that he attended and and their alumni um interaction. So he's gonna start to come and and support us on that level as well. So uh, pretty productive month, even though we had a couple of weeks off and uh that's where we are with the development committee.
Great. I'm glad to hear about alumni efforts. That sounds like good progress there. Any questions or comments for Ben? All right, then. Ed committee, Liz. You're on mute.
Jeez, I hate when that happens. Um, super quick update. We did not meet in December uh because I had a conflict and our January meeting is not till next Thursday. And we will be focusing on the Student Opportunity Act that uh Ellen had mentioned earlier as well as um just go, I'll take a look, relook at our goals and see if there's anything that we need to uh get focused on for this month. But I think that um that Student Opportunity Act is obviously going to be key. And then I suspect we will also um have some discussions. We've we've been doing um monthly updates on the remote learning. And I think we'll probably also be discussing, you know, what what the thoughts are around returning to school and all of that. So uh, like I said, no meetings yet, so nothing specific to update on.
Sounds good. So we had some time in the agenda here to discuss any topics that that might have come up, either public comment or any other committee reports. I don't think um there's any such topic, but is anything anybody wants to bring up for discussion?
Um, not a discussion item, but just a uh call out that the Alumni Back to the Future event is on Monday, January 11th. Looks like 9:45 AM.
Yeah, the one for the families was tonight, so we actually uh missed it, but they're doing the student one. I think that's the student.
Oh, that must be the student one.
Yeah, yeah.
And I also did not hear any action items this meeting. I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, but.
The only action item would be to share um, to make sure, let's see, to get the recording out. Was it for the Back to the Future event or for the Didero?
Didero.
Didero. Okay, that was it.
Yeah, we do have action items from before on the agenda um about the goals and Board on Track and right, we normally review that and and governance, if I recall correctly. I don't think there was much of an update on the other committees. And I think maybe a committee had some there, but I don't know if anybody has any comments about that, the smart goals and board on track.
It's probably worthwhile putting the um the grants review for since we're gonna uh go over it next month, just to make sure everyone puts their eyes on it before the next meeting as well.
Um, I just have one item. I mean, Sheila, you'd asked whether, you know, other governance committee members had anything to add. I think the one thing that maybe we talked about, that maybe we we can at least say a few words here is about board recruitment. We we I don't, I'm not sure if you wanted to have that conversation here, but uh we talked a little bit about the somewhat time-sensitive nature of, oh, we should probably be looking to add. Um, but I I I don't know whether you wanted to have additional discussion at governance before we brought that back here. So I'll leave it to you. I defer to you on that one.
Well, I think we can bring it up to the extent that, you know, one of our ongoing conversations that we've been working on.
Well, I think we can bring it up to the extent that, you know, one of our ongoing conversations that we've been working on, and I know Mike Trinkle is working on updates to the website, which kind of sidelined this a little bit because I think our page, the Board of Trustees page and, and some information for recruitment and people who might be interested in the board as part of that. But I would just kind of put it out there to the group and anyone that might be watching is that if you know people that are interested in participating in the board or if they're not really ready to, to take that step or commitment and they're interested in one area, committee area, ed, governance, finance, to really encourage people to do that, especially people who have skill sets that would really tie in to those areas, finance in particular, development. You know, just to, because a lot of times word of mouth or thinking of someone or, you know, I know someone who works in the biotech community that might be great for this and just kind of having us be the best ambassadors for the board. You know, we can put all the promotional material or whatever we want out there, but a lot of times it's really just word of mouth. I know Raul, I know other people have been, myself kind of introduced to the board by board members who, you know, saw something that was a good fit. So I just, it's something we can always be mindful of. So I think it merits discussion on that level. So just something for people to have in their minds as you go out and do all your wonderful, well, not go out, as you sit in these rooms that I've now grown very familiar with. Liz is in a different room tonight. It's very disconcerting to me. But as you zoom and talk and do all these things, just something to be mindful about, okay?
Absolutely. All right. I know it's hard to engage in networking and, and, you know, the typical getting to new, meet new people in, in this COVID world, but I'm sure things will get better soon. So there, the flip side of that, it's easier to participate. So, you know, for people that might have had a hard time to come into board meetings, now it's just a, a connection away, a dial-in away. All right, meeting effectiveness. Does anybody have any comments of how quickly we've gone through this? We're like an hour ahead of time. I don't know. Is that a good thing? Yes. Sounds like we're in agreement. Any agenda items for, for the February? The minutes, I mean, the agenda says January, but it's really for February. We will talk about the, the fall, fall survey results. So that's already there. Roger, will we be approving the board goals in the next board meeting?
I, I think that depends on governance. So I, I think it likely they may, the board goals might, might come from the February offsite.
Yeah, so I think that might
Probably the March timeframe.
Good.
But if, if committees have, if committees have finalized all their goals, that would be great.
Any other agenda items that anybody can think of for next month?
Raul, I just wanted to add that for January, you're going to have the vote. Even though it's the diversity training, you're going to have a vote.
Correct. The vote on the SOA. It'll be January 23rd, right? All right, and I guess we already talked about action items. Anything else before we go into executive session? Then I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
I'll make a motion for us to move into executive session to discuss the purchase or, or rental of real estate as discussion in open session would be detrimental to our position, to our position.
Thank you for adding the language. Do you have a second? Well, I'll second it. Raul, seconds. You helping with the roll call, Sarah? All right, you're still on mute.
Okay. Ben?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Mara?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
Done.
The motion passes, so it's 7:18. Do we think we need seven minutes reconvene at 7:25?
Sounds good.
Can someone send the link so it's in the top of my email? I couldn't find it earlier for executive session.
I'll send it. I'll be happy to send it back.
Oh, you have to invite anybody else specifically into the meeting?
Oh, yes.
Yes, Bob Baldwin and Lisa O'Connor, Mike Noraki and Leanna and myself.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. We'll see you in seven minutes.